All righty, let's call this meeting in order. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All righty, number three, any citizen is honored to be heard. Here in none. Number four, consideration of possible action on approved minutes for September 15th, 2017.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five, consideration of possible action on approved final plan for Fox Hollow Farms, Phase Four. Mr. Chair. Do you have lawn activity?
Quite a bit. This is where that big lake is.
Yeah.
Let's see this statement on here about public streets and roads, but it doesn't say anything about being constructed according to Kennedale Road standards.
It's private rooms.
Yeah, well, here I dedicate all my use of this set of plans. For the use of the public, for public highways, streets, ranches, utilities, months for their heirs, executives, administrators, successors, and sign forever having caused the same release from home cameras. There's public, public on there. I mean, that's...
I think...
Go ahead, Chair.
I think that's the same thing, same wording that was on Phase One, Two, and Three.
Yeah, I understand. Go ahead.
Terminology for the public dedication is for school buses and mail route access. The roads are maintained privately, not by the county.
Yeah, I'm with you there. So what sometimes happens is that, you know, we approve these plans for private maintenance by the homeowner association once it's turned over to them. And then the homeowner association turns around and asks the county to take over.
We've had Beaver Lake Manor before this. It's been there for twenty years.
I'm not just saying, I'm not saying you guys have. I'm saying it's happened a lot in the past. We've got that we're dealing with now.
You don't have to accept them either.
You're right about that.
Right. You don't have to accept them.
Any more discussion?
That was, that was my, I'm not against it. I just wanted to bring that up. It's been an issue that the board's been dealing with in the past.
We've always had pretty good homeowner associations.
Well, I believe we approved that.
Sometimes there is no homeowner association or accepted or whatever it is we're supposed to be doing here.
I have a motion.
Sir.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, I mean, I've always kind of argued the point that the county really shouldn't accept any more roads than what we got. We can't take care of what we got. Any certain pin on that?
I wouldn't try to say. Not at all.
I know now that you can sue anybody for anything, anytime.
Well, it's not about, it's not about suing. It's about responsibilities, you know, of the county.
Yeah, a lot of people don't understand how that works when you want to file a lot of houses.
Yeah. Sometimes hard to explain.
Yeah.
We back for the homeowner associations. We live in, we have our meetings, and then people come in and we explain to them how we make main roads.
Did you get just the two copies from the room?
Yes.
Well, a lot of times the developers will do three, so they have an original, because we're going to get the two.
Right.
And you should have to go get the little one made, so...
Yeah, when I go get the little one, I need to have two or three of these. Course, my first box. It's out. It's chasring area. I'm checking it on Third and Fifth Highway. Well, maybe get them all sold. If it's all family.
Well, others don't need them.
Might not be too good.
My son will already want these two. My granddaughter wants this one.
Mine is more reaching for those. Then I'll go ahead since I have it here. I stamped my testament. I think there's a spot down there. When you file it, she'll throw it on there. Make sure that they do. Beverly's over there, so I know she will. And she's got three more coming behind just now.
Thank you.
All righty, number six, consideration of possible action on approved in the final lap for Tracy Williams.
The one in the middle bikes.
Okay.
The one in the middle bikes.
I'm sure you've already been through it. You got all the street names.
Well, this is actually, we already have the neighborhood. It's just two lots. I had an old Arizona and it's gone, so we're just planning to do lots.
So the streets have already been registered with ACOG?
Yeah. The whole neighborhood's already there.
Any questions?
Haven't even seen it. Slide in two lots here.
Oh, yeah, okay. No big deal. Yeah, just two or two. Is that a motion?
Sir.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, hang on. We're going to do them one at a time?
Well, that's what my question is. I listed the three under the one item, so you can do it either way. That's all I just need to know. You can do them all at one motion or you can do them individually.
Motion for all three or one?
I think the other two.
One at a time. Just all in favor for Canyon Creek?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Let's sign it.
Just where's the special pin right here?
Special pin through the special sign.
Tracy's got them. I know, bring your own.
I posted them on the pocket too.
Is that the same color?
It's going to be black. Why do I just sign the block you don't have?
Just go right under Marvin Mary.
This is for a few homes. This is a bunch of homes.
I mean, it's just two lots, so it would just be two home homes.
Okay. On the first one? On the first one.
This is Highland Meadows. This is an entirely new neighborhood.
How many homes in that? Eighty-eight.
District?
This land is two, one. I think it's district two.
Get through school district?
On Simmons, Simmons Road.
Where?
Between Kelly. That's mine.
District one is in Gethry School District.
I believe that is. That's just outside Deer Creek over there.
So you got three.
I think so. Between Kelly, yeah. It's just, just north of...
Highland Trails.
Highland Trails, yeah. And we're, we're going to be overlaying Kelly Road for Waterway after Charter Road next spring.
You may accept donation?
We do accept donations.
Just throwing that out there.
So I guess you, y'all just heard the other discussion we had about private, public rights and maintenance.
Okay, so they just did two.
I move with you for Highland Meadows.
I don't understand. Were his public or his private?
Yeah.
Marvin.
Privately maintained, publicly...
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Marvin, would you say Kelly and what?
It's between Kelly and Santa Fe on Simmons Road. Simmons Road is one mile north of Waterway.
All right, number three.
Can I?
Yeah, I'm ready.
This is a neighborhood that we already had as well. They just needed a man, a little bit of his property, our property, and then he gave us a little bit of his property because the backyard was weird. So it's no new lots. It's just kind of a little bit more of a property line.
Is that upside down?
Yeah.
I just wondered if my eyes were...
No, it takes me a minute to adjust which way they want to go as well.
Okay. This one's mine, too. Between ten and May. Goodness sakes. So this road didn't go all the way through here, right, to Simmons? You knew that, right?
I don't know that.
Yes, it doesn't. There's a creek over here that had this, this road's been closed for, since before I was commissioner. So the only way to get in and out over to here is down ten and over to Simmons. Actually, Simmons doesn't even go all the way through over here either because there's a bridge right here that's out as well.
I don't think this is anything that anybody will have to get to. But these are already planted. This is really the only thing that's different, like the property line.
Okay. Just wanted to bring that up, so there's no misunderstanding. And I guess what I was trying to say is the county has no intention of opening those roads anytime in the near future.
Okay. I'll let them know that.
That makes sense. Yep. So given that, I believe we approve.
Do people complain about that or say much about it or?
I got a lawyer that wrote us a letter about it very quickly. We'll talk about it later.
I have a motion.
Sir.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Good luck on selling them eighty-eight.
Thank you.
Didn't want to sneeze all over your plaque.
Thank you.
Add fifty homes just like that.
Just in the blink of an eye.
You remind the engineer when they drive that there's three towns.
Sometimes.
Do they normally do, huh?
Sometimes there's three.
Do ours normally have two or more?
I don't think so. I don't recall having that statement before. But now, listen, Tracy does so many. I couldn't keep up with them anyway, so...
I think I put some candy that rip way down there.
Give her.
Thank you.
Simmons is a gravel road going back there to Kelly.
All right, thanks. Good luck.
You guys.
Number seven, consideration of possible action on approved. Five-year C-I-R-B plan.
I brought copies of the suggestions. It was emailed out. If anyone needs them.
Yeah, probably so. I guess I, I did look at the suggestions. Now that I see this. So I did look at this. What I would recommend after looking at all this is that we go with option two and if, and if we get federal funding at ACOG for Coltrane Phase One, that this other bridge that was taken, that's taken off of option one, that that other bridge gets funded.
So to clarify...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, let me clarify because I think I know where he's going. Currently, District Three has three bridges on the plan. And if you look on option one, that CN-191 East Beaver Creek is not funded under option two. So what Marvin is saying is in February, when ACOG funding comes through, if Coltrane Phase Two is funded...
Phase one.
I mean, Phase One, that $2.6 million would return to the CIRB plan. He's saying that he would like that to go to put this bridge of money that's being dropped off the plan back on to fund with that two-six. That's what he's saying.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but I mean, that bridge, I'm thinking about just building it with our own forces, so I haven't decided. Let me throw this out there. We got my Crescent Creek Bridge on here. Both of my bridges are shovel-ready. If I had to pick one over the other, I would take Skeleton Creek to be funded in eighteen.
Which it's on for by less.
That's what's happening. I guess that's a big, big question for Bobby. We didn't do a NECA clearance on it. We just, you know, we've done the checklist.
Skeleton Creek?
Mm-hmm.
Robert told me just yesterday that he's trying to wrap that one up, that Skeleton Creek up, that it local government.
Well, I was wondering, do we have time to get the clearance so we can give R-B our allocations toward that? And that would save us some C-I-R-B funds instead of letting our money roll down to the circuit engineering.
No, I couldn't answer that for you clearly.
I mean, obviously, I want, I'd like to go ahead and get it built, but it's...
Well, I mean, I've also got three bridges that's been taken off of this plan that are ready too. I mean, if we need, I'm with you on that, but...
When was the, when's the letting in eighteen? I guess it's my question.
I think there's several lettings.
There are. They do them monthly, yeah.
Honestly, these...
I think your Skeleton Creek will be ready whenever you want it, you know, to get it away.
I'm not sure they've done the NECA.
Well, that's what Robert was trying to wrap up when I spoke to him yesterday. He just happened to mention, I was talking to him about something else. I was talking to everybody, and he mentioned your Skeleton Creek. And he added it in front of it. And he's working with Stevens over at Memorial Raleigh to get that wrapped up.
Okay. So that would save us, I think Lubbock County's allocations on that's like $215,000 or, yeah. I mean, that would save our C-I-R-B funds.
Yeah, it would.
If I could make a suggestion, maybe, that, that just to kind of tweak what Marvin has brought along, take the option that you want and understand once ACOG comes through in February and we actually know exactly, then we can come back and make an adjustment. Because ODOT will let us adjust.
That's what they told us to do as well, sir.
Those, this is just me, and don't get me in trouble, but those five-year plans, it's an idea. And even though you move down the, down the road, in three months from now, things might change, and they are flexible. Whatever your concerns might be, up in three months might be different, and you can flex to make those needs match with your will.
Next year we'll come back and revisit it. So...
What that means...
You can show some things around a little bit.
I, I'm good with option two.
Mike, what do you say?
I'm, I'm good with option two. I've got some serious expenses coming up here in the near future. I say near future, it's three years. Let's go.
So I entertain a motion for option two.
So option two it is.
I got a motion.
Yep.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Number eight, consideration of possible action on warding bid, twenty-eighteen eight for one or more, twenty-seventeen or newer Mack trucks. I guess it says Mack trucks, newer trucks.
Deal can afford not to. So we're going to go with a little bit.
And that was...
For four trucks or tractors.
So if I may to clarify?
Sure.
And you're trading in, correct?
We're trading in our four trucks for those four trucks. And that was a heck of a profit you gave us for those four trucks.
Well, I got a question. I told and talked to your guy out there. Is there any way that I can purchase one of them trucks from him, and then you just take the...
You can, go to retail. Yeah, that's, I had talked...
I bought that from you.
Yeah, I think I talked to Mark on that, and our approach was not to really change the bid because we actually bid to get the trucks. And that's, in all honesty, that's part of what makes the whole thing work for us.
Right, I get it.
We sell the trucks that do nothing and make a little return, but...
You pretty well gave us retail on those pretends.
Yeah, we gave, they were, I thought strong figures.
They were very strong figures, yeah, very strong.
Well, I just, Chair.
That's why I'm saying I can't afford not to.
So, okay, so that we're clear, District Two is going to trade in for twenty-fourteen Mack trucks for the purchase of four twenty-eighteen Mack trucks at an interest rate of 2.4 percent. The trade-in value varied from $61,000 to $64,000 on the four. So that leaves the purchase price of fifty-four, fifty-two six, zero six four to fifty-seven zero six four, depending on the trade-in.
And then I think we have on there a November, December delivery. Those trucks will come in before that, and they will get the exact payoff at that time when we have all four pieces of equipment. And we can get that 120 being filled up then, so...
Okay.
Of course. Make the motion.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. I'll keep you posted.
Goodness gracious.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Number nine, consideration of possible action on approved contract task of limiting construction for paving in Demeridian Road, bid twenty-eighteen dash seven.
Contract just requires the actual signature of the chairman, and then I will run it to Stillwater for Lowell.
You should see it again. Okay. Read it.
No, I've seen it.
Same one.
I've seen it before. This is just awarded, we've already approved the...
We awarded the bid.
Awarded the contract, approved the contract.
You only want to say...
This is, this is why we own our own laydown machine in Doug County. It takes so long to do this.
Number ten, did we vote on that?
No.
Oh, we got a motion and a second.
No, we don't have that yet.
I got a motion.
Okay.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Now, all in favor?
Not at all.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Jeez, work with me. Consideration of possible action on approved resolution accepting $438 donation from Kerry Evans to District Three for Culver Pike to be placed on Camp Russell Road.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, consideration of possible action on approved resolution accepting $525.60 donation from Cicely Shannon Horst to District Two for Culver Pike for Sherwood. I'll make the motion.
Sir.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Carries. Number twelve, consideration of possible action on purchase of road materials for general government for roadway and parking lot areas at fairgrounds. If y'all remember, a while back I asked about paving a road around the fairgrounds down here. You know, we just finished up with the city of Gethry. They paid for the material to do the main road. We laid it for them.
Sir.
I think the expense of blacktop is too high to go around at a time we build a base and everything. But what I was curious about, maybe some crushed asphalt to go around the building for a road, and maybe next year we'll have some money to put blacktop on it.
Crushed asphalt?
Your next question's going to be, well, how much, Bonnie? I'm just hoping for a blank check.
But it's going to be less than the asphalt would cost, right?
Ah.
Absolutely would be.
Yeah. Absolutely. I mean, I was figuring asphalt, was it fifteen thousand?
How many tons do we think of asphalt was we bidding? Because, not that it spreads ton for ton, but crushed asphalt's a little less. It's about twenty dollars a ton.
I don't remember the length of the road. Let's just say you hundred feet. See if my fingers do.
Take off your boots. You might need toes as well.
I was thinking that it's going to take around 450 tons of hot mixed asphalt, twenty-two foot wide. I'm thinking... I'm thinking it's gonna be, I don't know, eight, ten thousand dollars to do this.
Yeah, ten, twelve, yeah.
Could I suggest?
Yes, ma'am.
That we just set a, a maximum dollar limit of, say, fifteen thousand?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, yeah.
Does that give us a, a little leeway there?
Lot, lot of wiggle room, you know, with it. Or you don't need to hire not to exceed, just in case, or figures are off, so...
I'm good with whatever y'all want.
Make the motion.
Motion for what?
Uh, to not exceed fifteen thousand.
Purchase of crushed asphalt?
Purchase of crushed asphalt.
And that's what District Two hauling it? If, if y'all don't have anything to do, y'all wanna help haul it, I mean, it would be appreciated. All right, I got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Where are we at on here, thirteen? Consideration of possible action to allow District Attorney's Office to decorate landscaping in front of the courthouse with purple ribbons for domestic violence awareness of law.
Kim Wooder, I'm here to answer questions.
And you're Nikki?
Trish, I'm Ripley, I'm at the Gotham Police Department. And it'll just be purple ribbons, that's the color of the month.
I have this letter that, that Kim Wooder, uh, asked me to put this on. She's with the DA's office and was expected to be here, and she's got called to a school or something and couldn't. So this was delivered to me this morning, um, kind of explaining what they wanna do and all of the agencies that are involved. Sheriff might be able to tell ya, his name's on there.
Oh, he is?
There you go.
Well, Sheriff, get a speed, get a copy of that there.
Basically, next month is, is domestic violence month. And this is basically just to decorate the, some of the landscaping and stuff like that with, uh, the color of the month, which would be purple, as we talked about earlier, uh, to signify that we're in support of fighting the, the domestic abuse, domestic violence stuff.
Well, I'll make the motion with a purr, in a second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion carries, thanks for coming. Yeah, thank you, Sheriff, all that's good, brother.
Chairman, if you wanna jump to item two on the addendum and finish that up, then we can come back to the, the busy stuff.
Item two?
Yes, because item one's a duplicate.
Okay, uh, item two on the addendum, consideration of possible action on proven purchase order from CBRI account sixty-one fifty-two, Haskell Limb Construction, in the amount of a hundred thousand.
That's part of the payment.
So the board is here, Monty, I need you up here.
Got some a hundred thousand to go right back into that fund. When we get reimbursed.
I'll make the motion with a purr, in a second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Just supposed to knock this out while we're here, and then... Three, consideration of possible action on proven certificate of completeness of CDVG contract sixteen sixty-eight five, CDVG sixteen, paving Wildwood Road in Overland. Got several, thank you. Uh, I'll make the motion.
This is just for the chairman's signature, chairman?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Replace five hundred with a concrete curb.
If you don't have a problem, I want to combine four, five, and six. It's, um, all accepting fifty-dollar donations.
Make the motion.
I have a motion.
For a second.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And there are fifty-dollar donations to purchase, um, culvert patch asphalt.
They've got a little stretch of about a tenth of a mile of asphalt. They're appreciative. All right, your favorite subject's fixing to come up.
My first is denied. My first is denied. Not really.
I'm gonna save it.
Number seven, discussion of internet service within county offices.
Mr. Chairman, I had it worded that way so we could discuss more than just this, this room here. If we wanted, if we wanted to, we don't have to, but...
Uh, I assume it's having something to do with Wi-Fi?
Yes, sir.
Being, with that Wi-Fi available. So what we need to do?
Well, we need to contract for the NISP, um, for them to, to bring the service into the building. I assume we've already got service into the building since we've got one office that already has it here. Then, uh, they need to set up a wireless router, um, to allow access to the internet. That router also functions as a type of firewall, which keeps the bad guys out and the good guys in, so to speak, to a limited extent. And, uh, that would allow Sarah to have her own internet access and also allow public access to the internet for people that came to our, our board meetings.
What's it gonna cost?
Million dollars a month. I, I think, what, internet access is, what, thirty-five, forty dollars a month, something like that?
Well, for my office, and I have the lower level with Cox Cable, and it's fifty-nine ninety-five a month. The, the purchase of the Sonic Wall, which is the type of, of secure router that is used over there, I think was like fifteen hundred dollars, and then it's all set up and, and securely split off. But the, the monthly service runs me sixteen dollars a month.
In addition.
So...
The router's a one-time purchase.
So, do us and... What are they charging for the, for Sonic Wall?
I think I paid...
Secure router?
Fifteen hundred for the purchase.
Yeah.
And then I just have an annual, um, license, maintenance, upgrade, keep it all upgraded and all of that kind of stuff, which is, I think, two hundred dollars.
I don't have a problem with it, but should we, should we get some numbers, then we know what we're...
I, I think we should get some estimates, yeah. So, uh, so Cox Cable is, is one vendor that, that can do it. Um, there's a company called AtLink that does wireless internet services as well. Um, and it's probably around the same price. I, I don't know what they charge for equipment, but, uh...
Now, I will tell you, the Sonic Link didn't come from Cox.
And then AT&T, probably, right?
With DSL?
With DSL.
Speaking just from my office and what we do with the internet?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is a non-stop upload of, the second anything's recorded, it hits. I, I will tell you that stability-wise, Cox has been extremely reliable for us.
DSL is not, I know that.
And speed-wise. And, and I use DSL at home and don't have a problem with what I use it at home for. I don't know that I would rely on it for a commercial purpose.
I, I agree.
I have AtLink, I don't know I'd rely on that for a commercial purpose. So you're gonna get us an estimate?
My only question with AtLink is the fact that it's not wired and how much weather interferes.
It does.
I don't know anything about it.
I've got it at home, I actually used it for business when I worked from home. And it only goes down when we lose a tower during, during rainstorms. And it, it does go down when, when, uh, uh, high winds knock the tower down, you know? However, Cox goes out when backhoes hit cables too.
That's true.
So, I mean, it's, unless, there's, there's no way to have a hundred percent uptime on an internet connection, is what I'm getting at, so... Um, it, it all depends on, you know, our appetite for rest and the cost. So, uh, yes, I'd be happy to get, get some estimates, so...
All right, I certainly don't have a problem with it.
So we revisit this at, our meeting on the fifteenth?
I agree.
I mean, unless you want me to do, uh, work over the weekend, I'd be happy to do that, too.
It's too late for that agenda.
Okay, we can't get it on the agenda then, so, okay, fine.
They can't, he said the fifteenth.
Well, no, that's what he said, he worked over the weekend, he was thinking Monday is, well, we're too late for that agenda.
All righty.
Yes, sir, I'll take that action.
All right, thank you, Monty. Number eight, consideration of possible action on proving the following temporary road crossing permits.
And we actually just, as confusing as this, item twelve on the first agenda also is temporary road crossing permits for each two services.
That's five dollars, deal.
Present services.
Five dollars.
So this is select, so do you wanna do them combined?
Combine, maybe.
Okay.
I'll make the motion with a purr.
I'll second. Road crossings, uh, all...
Yep, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Chris, can you move him?
I got one done, I think I can go there.
Pretty cheap, right?
Where's that?
And then on, item nine on the addendum is for permanent road crossing. So I know you've got them just all in a pile there.
Yeah. Crossing Mason Street. About that. Make the motion, second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
On that NECA clearance deal, I mean, if they didn't do the, the Fed, I mean, I would like to go ahead and do it just so I can get that two hundred and twelve thousand, whatever it is, save some of our CBRI dollars.
I've touched base with Robert.
Yeah. I've been talking to that Steven, that...
Yeah.
No, but, how, how was the engineering doing on that? Did that, how was that paid for, non-serve? But I don't wanna pull up my project either.
I, I, I called Robert, because he's, he was fresh on, sitting in front of him on his desk yesterday.
I called him. So, you think he works on Fridays?
Yes, he does, matter of fact, he works... I had that conversation yesterday, he works five eights, so I've worked four tens.
Yeah.
He works five eights.
So, is ODOT okay with that? If, you know, we use serve money for engineering? And to use CBRI money to finish it, is it? Well, it, it'd be outside the scope of their...
It's not CBRI.
It's, uh, it's the... It'd be the BR allocations that Love and Candy's allotted yearly.
Okay, still, still, I'm, I'm... It's outside the scope of their control at that point, yeah. Exactly, you understand what I'm asking? I'm not trying to...
Right.
To nix your deal, I'm, I'm trying to, if there's a precedent to be set here, I'm, I'm all for that. I'd like to see that happen.
I, I just think, uh, they wouldn't have a problem with it, if it would save the serve dollars of two hundred fifteen thousand.
Oh, I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
I think it works much like the ACOG, if I remember the explanation from previous, uh, meetings, that it would be a reimbursement. So serve's gonna front it up, VR will reimburse to serve, just like your ACOG, STP funds will reimburse.
Reimburse the engineering costs?
Well, it, serve came out of that, so...
Yeah.
So in other words, they'll go ahead and pay the two million, serve will...
Will the BR?
And the BR will go back into the serve.
Reimburse the serve fund for the engineering costs, is what I'm asking. Do we have to do that?
Well, I don't know that, it, it's not a full reimbursement.
You know what I mean, you know what I'm talking about, yeah.
But the whole project is a hundred, or a million, almost two million bucks. And, you know, that, that money would just roll back into our...
I mean, I would like it not to be.
Right.
I, you know, I really would. Uh, that, that would, that would make our lives a lot easier to say, no, we wanna take that off. We've already done engineering on it, on a couple of bridges that I'd like to take off and just do them ourselves. See where I'm going with that?
I think I follow you.
If I can ask, um, since you, the board took action to accept what we labeled as option two for the, the five-year plan, um, do you want me to email that to Carol at CED? Or, or what do we need to do to get it submitted downtown? Since we did it this way, which is a little different.
I'd say email it to Carol and Jan.
But this is what's approved by the board.
Yep, if you don't mind.
This is our five-year plan, as approved by the Board of Commissioners and Board of Accountants.
And, and to be clear, Shannon has looked at this. In fact, the, the letting dates that are on that option two came from Shannon.
Okay, great. And then, uh, one of the other things, you know, Troy practically pointed out that if we get approval from ACOG, uh, for federal funding for that Peltrane project, we're gonna get several million dollars back from our serve fund. One of the things that we might do with that, if, if they don't, if they won't allow us to, to use, like, BR funds to, to, or they're gonna require us to do that, we can take that extra serve money and pay back those engineering costs and, and, and get released from those, so we can do those projects ourselves. I mean, that's an option, I, I just wanted to bring that up.
Sure.
Because Troy was the one that thought about that, uh, at one of the meetings we had, and it kinda made those folks go quiet for a minute.
Hey, if you would, before you email it, if you'll put on, uh, the Cresta Creek shovel ready as well.
Okay.
Just because it's not on that calendar.
Well, yeah, I guess, because it wasn't identified that way to me, so...
Yeah, I'll be able to get that before. That's for sure.
Well... Mike, the reason on that was because, just to clarify, we built this plan using the twelve million dollar, five-year allotment.
Right.
This way, and they're still gonna have to break it out by the year, because the money only comes in yearly. So that's why the two are a year apart, instead of moving one up. Does that make sense?
I understand that, I do. But they were wanting the shovel ready now. And if it's shovel ready, it seems like they would fund it, they've got two hundred million in that fund, so...
And maybe they will.
Hard to say.
I think Monday, um, ODOT is meeting Monday to revise that eight-year plan and, um, what's going to be kicked out and what's gonna be readjusted on all of this kind of stuff. So after Monday, there may be all kinds of things come down.
And after the special session, there may, may even be more, yes, probably.
Are we done with all the road crossing permits?
Yes, sir.
So we're ready for fifteen, back on the regular agenda?
Yes, sir.
Consideration of possible action on consent, agenda items?
Okay, Ron.
Extraordinary session.
Transfers.
You've been reading Governor, Governor Fallon's press releases again, haven't you?
I do, I do get a few of them.
You guys sign up, yeah?
Not that there's anything wrong with that, I don't know.
It's good to be on board.
It is.
Most of them. I'm just guessing about the quality of content. We're in recess, I thought that, for June, July, and August. September is four. Any checks?
Yeah.
Checks, two, and wait on.
Well, Lieutenant Suter Valley gets a lot, huh?
Yeah.
That was taken, I'm not giving to you.
I know. They would've got a lot.
Lot more. We're trying to figure out how to have our own fire station out there. I told them all takes its money. I stole one of your lines from them.
All about money. It'd be number fifteen for the county. And that money ain't no problem till you run out. Ain't no problem.
Oh, that is no problem, cause you can't do anything.
Nice church program, homie, son.
There you go.
Capelat life.
Capelat life. Five dollars.
Not all of it, so they keep it open.
Tell me, really.
See, I do listen, Troy, I do.
If, if the excise board doesn't approve those five dollars, then that account can't be used through the year. It takes that being approved by the excise board, so that.
If we needed to move money into that capelat life account to do something, then.
When do you leave?
Sunday. Even I'll say this.
Uh, I'll come back and do a plan.
A broke man.
If he comes back, stick with the brother, you should get something there.
Yeah. My first trip there, Ed.
Flamingo's the best one, man.
First thing to do that.
Very annoying, huh? Where'd you say you're staying?
The Y.
Close to Manhattan.
Off strip.
Oh, no. It's off the strip, man.
Not far, I mean, you can see it all, but it is actually off the strip, although it's kind of expanded, cause you've got the Rio Palms now across the street from it, and.
Cause it's a strip window view, or mountain, I, I wonder if the strip might go, might down there, but I guess it's.
You're gonna be off, the actual, Las Vegas Boulevard is the actual strip. And the Rio sets on, I think it's on Flamingo, so it's, it's off, I mean, you can see it from, but it's not on the strip.
A lot of great museums, history, history there.
Well, I do like player cards, basketball first. Much about basketball.
There actually is history there, if you choose to leave that four square miles of play.
Only there for a few hours, so. Only there for a few hours.
Too fast.
A lot of history buried in that desert around.
I'm not trying to get too close to that area. Wanna come back.
Actually, you think about it, it's unique, even with its climate, because you can go an hour in one direction and snow ski, and then go an hour in the other direction and water ski.
You can stare here on Goodall.
In the same day, in the same day.
Yeah.
I've actually been on the mountain in the snow, and then down at the lake in the same day, so. This election will claim for money to sign. Alcohol beverage. It's a very unique place.
Wow. How long, did you say, a couple, few hours?
Uh, Sunday to Tuesday.
Okay.
Late Tuesday.
Should be long enough.
Yeah, I would think it might be.
Circus survey, whatever.
There's like five or six different circus shows. I've never seen them.
The most impressive thing, and the cheapest thing, will last with you forever, is go visit Hoover Dam.
Exactly.
Yeah.
How far is that from?
Not very far.
Not very far.
Sixty miles, fifty-five, sixty.
It's one of the most impressive sides you'll ever see, looking down.
Yeah.
It will stay with you, the casinos will fade.
Right.
It will stay.
The dam is worth it.
They can tour.
They do, they'll take you down under, in, down to the turbines.
Yeah, like on Vegas, they, uh, um.
I haven't been out there since they opened.
When you start hearing that concrete snapping and crackling and popping, don't worry about it breaking while you're in there.
Yeah.
It's never done that before.
Okay, so, and, and there's nobody buried in the concrete, that's the number one myth about Hoover Dam, yes, I think a hundred and twenty men died while building it, but they're not left in the concrete.
They can't prove that, no.
They can.
They've X-rated.
They X-rated.
Yeah, we X-rated.
See me an office in the dam, give a third of them a fake name.
And finally, and I heard my entire life growing up there, that we would get a bridge over the dam, because driving that dam is interesting.
It is scary.
Yeah, and they finally, and it's only been less than ten years, I think.
Scary.
Yeah, I haven't seen it, I haven't been out there since they opened it.
Yeah.
It spans, it spans, when you come down into the canyon from the Nevada side, you pick up the bridge as a five-mile span, straight past the towers to the Arizona side, for the tours and stuff, you get off and you take the little twisty-turny mountain drive on down to the dam, but this keeps all the trucks and traffic off that little twisty, scary.
Yeah.
And it keeps all the trucks that could be carrying stuff that's not conducive to a dam being there.
The damn lie.
Kaboom, that's all I'm saying.
Like tanker loads of ammonium perchlorite that was being moved out of Henderson, Nevada to Florida?
Yes, ma'am.
My grandfather drove those trucks. They made the, they made the rocket fuel in Henderson, Nevada, and truck it to Florida. And when PepCon blew, I was living there when PepCon blew, the, the plant would kaboom.
That was a big blowout.
That was massive kaboom.
When was this?
Let's see, I moved here in ninety-three, so PepCon blew in about eighty-five, eighty-six.
My wrist is cramping up on me.
I'd entertain a motion on the consent and agenda items.
Salute.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries, sixteen, consideration of possible action on approving claims, the payment for September twenty-seventeen.
We have a meeting Monday?
I, I won't be able to.
I'll put my time off.
First Monday of the month. First Monday, the fifteenth, and the last business day.
I have a hard time remembering all these.
I, I think that every county will have a meet, well, except for Oklahoma County, and, you know, they live in their own world, because they meet on Wednesdays.
The rest of them meet every Monday, don't they?
Yeah, but I think the statute says you have to meet the first Monday, but they meet on Wednesday, but.
I think Kingfisher County meets every Monday.
Most counties do.
Everybody meets Monday.
Except us. We're unique and special.
We are all that.
Kind of rare, God, Mondays.
Actually, I've had, talked to other counties that didn't realize that you didn't have to meet every Monday, and have went, hmm, maybe we ought to talk about that, so.
I like this one, I think.
Yeah.
More often.
We used to meet every Monday, um, Commissioner Bowser changed that.
That was over Las Vegas, too, wasn't it?
Yeah, I, I, I believe so.
He'd been there once.
A month.
Once or twice.
A month.
Yeah, was a good guy.
I saw maybe we approved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, seventeen, any citizens daring to be heard? Well, they had planned to say, well, go, now he's saying that. Uh, eighteen comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners.
Got one thing here, we got an official request addressed to the Board of Commissioners. Has to do with that road I talked about earlier, May Avenue, just north of Waterloo Road, doesn't go all the way through, there's a bridge that went out several years ago, and, uh, it's my understanding that the road that goes from Simmons back south on May was abandoned by the county. That's what I can, what I can find so far, and then also, Simmons Road that goes back to the east from May Avenue, was also abandoned by the county, cause there's a bridge out there as well. And we've got a request from the Attorney's Office for, uh, for documents supporting that, and if we can't find the documents supporting that, then I believe I would ask the board to, uh, to, to make a resolution or sign a resolution stating such that those, those roads have been abandoned by the county.
Okay, so we're gonna vacate those roads?
Well, I, I think they've already been vacated, is what I'm getting at.
Well, just have, have the documentation.
Yes, sir.
Just find the documentation.
Unfortunately, a lot of that kind of stuff back in the day wasn't.
Very well documented.
Do some searching.
All right, I can do to help you, just let me know.
County Commissioners, so. That's all I have, sir.
We'll lock up something. Uh, yesterday, went down to ODOT to the project planning, and had Brian Taylor there, who's the, uh, engineer, District Four, or Division Four, excuse me, and the project, of course, is that I thirty-five Waterloo intersection. And Oklahoma County District Three, and our district, would like to go together, see what we can do about extending the length of that. Right now, it's going half the distance between I thirty-five and Sooner, and half the distance between I thirty-five and Air Depot Pine. So what we want to do is see if we can get an STP to extend that, ODOT is doing all the engineering. And the meeting yesterday was to see what was involved in those, that additional footage. So what we're wanting to do is the intersection of Sooner and Waterloo is gonna be multi-lane there at that intersection, with lines that will be paid for by Oklahoma County. Uh, the, um, lanes will have several turn lanes going both into Oklahoma County and into Logan County on Sooner. And that means that that has to be straightened up going north from Waterloo, which means that we are gonna have to come up with a buck for purchasing additional roadway, now, some of that is already on dedicated, you know, section line, cause that road curves. So we, the plan is, is to abandon a piece of that road, maybe still use it as a temporary road while they're building the other, but we have a house to purchase.
Can we use SERB funds for that?
I think so.
We're gonna need some kind of funds for it.
So, we got that one, plus. Let's put that on our agenda to talk about, cause,
Right.
one of the things that, I mean, we, we've talked about, if this Coltrane project gets federal funding at ACOG, we're gonna have some SERB funds available.
I understand that.
To do some things, and that, that may be one of the things we want to look at.
Which is one of the reasons why I'm bringing her up, is this. So, what we're on the Pioneer Depot side, uh, all we're really wanting to do is keep that as two-lane, north and south, and, and kinda straighten that road up right there, cause right now it's a dog lake. And so, to straighten that up, I may have a little bit of roadway that I have to purchase on that east side, cause that road curves to the west. But, um, I don't see that as being much of an issue right there, so, uh, we still have that roadway for a quarter mile, uh, going from Pine West, that is going to go down to a three lane, it's going from a five lane to a three lane. And so I'll have a little bit to purchase there, now, I've talked in the past with the primary owner of that land on the north, and I believe that we can get a pretty good deal on that, but again, it all comes under federal guidelines, we're gonna have to do.
I did a pretty good.
If it's free, can get the STP, the problem.
Cause we, we got some pretty good deals on some bridge roadway, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
The problem is, is that, uh, in going for the STP, is that in the past, we get extra points when it's multi-local governments, but they have just changed those guidelines, primarily, I believe, because it's mostly municipalities sitting there, and they don't want us to game up. That's my opinion, but still, we're going to try for that, and so, we got that. The other thing that came out of this meeting, too, is they are going ahead and meeting about a signal line at the one oh five thirty-three junction. And one oh five, I don't know if you go out that direction at all, but that is a barren market road from way back when, and it's kinda wavy, and it doesn't meet the, the guidelines even for the state when it comes to safety, so, they finally got that, he believes, on the eight-year plan, he's tried for three years to get it on there, and it looks like that may go three-lane from the thirty-three intersection going east on one oh five to post, and then down to a two-lane. And, uh, I look forward to that, but that's still eight years in the future, we don't know what the legislature's doing with ODOT. I talked to ODOT on the I thirty-five Waterloo project, and, uh, they actually made, they're gonna do the engineering for free, I mean, they're gonna pay for the engineering, so that would be a, it'd be a really good deal for Logan and Oklahoma County to jump on board, get that over. But the utilities and roadway's gonna be one expensive little project right there.
Well, I'm hoping to get that, that, um, Camelot, whatever it is that owns that hundred and fifty-seven acres, I hope to, uh, get some relief from them, they may want to have that frontage on that new road and buy that property.
Did they have anything on paper yet on that deal?
Say, give it a look.
That, uh, anything on paper in alignment?
Engineering documents.
Any drawings?
Um, tentatively, yes.
Conceptual stuff?
Uh-huh.
That'd be nice.
That's what we were doing yesterday, to see where do we want this.
I think that'd be nice to see.
I know, it would be.
All right, anything else? Nineteen, consideration of possible action on the government.
Salute.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.